Good evening, welcome to the Forsyth County Board of Education meeting and I'd like to call it to order. Today is October the sixteenth and it is six o'clock. At this time, if you will join me in the emication and pledge. Good and gracious God, thank you for blessing us beyond measure. We are of all people most blessed and know that to whom much is given, much is required. Be with those families, businesses, and communities affected by Hurricane Michael. Bless our military, police forces, and all those who protect us each day. Bless our teachers as they share the wonders of learning and help lay the foundation for better citizens for tomorrow. We have an awesome school staff and for that we are particularly thankful. Give us a clear vision so that we can focus and invest in the things that matter. We ask for wisdom, courage, and love as we make decisions tonight on behalf of our school family and community. Help us be wise stewards of all you have entrusted to us. Amen.
Salute.
Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I would just like to thank all of the staff members who attended the I run last weekend with the Barrow Foundation sponsor. There were what, how many, over nine hundred? Nine hundred staff members. It was just a lot of fun and raised thousands of dollars for technology for our students. So, just wanted to commend them for what they've done.
You have before you an agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Somebody.
Second. Motion by Tom, the second by Nancy. Y'all in favor? Unanimous?
Good evening. This is, in my opinion, the most exciting part of our night is when we get to recognize people at our monthly board meetings. And tonight, we have the opportunity and privilege to recognize a student from South Forsyth Middle School and Forsyth Virtual Academy, Pranav Bhati. Pranav, if you'll walk around the back, please, and come around the front. Pranav earned first place at the National Beta Convention this past summer in seventh grade mathematics competition. So, congratulations, Pranav. And his teacher is Ms. Kim Shire, the Beta Club sponsor at South Forsyth Middle School. So, she'll see you. Congratulations. And also, other people here that are supporting Pranav. I think we maybe have family members, dads maybe with his camera up there, and principals. Thank you for your work and support of what we do in our school system. Also, we would like to recognize the Forsyth County Retired Educators Association because on November fourteenth is Retired Educators Day. I'm sorry, fourth, not fourteenth, I apologize. So, we would like to recognize those people that are here in support of the Forsyth County Retired Educators Association. You all stand up. You all come down and shake hands. You all come down and shake hands. Come on. I see so many people I've worked with and have been a student of in my career. Hello. How are you, Beverly? Good to see you. Hey, how are you doing? Good to see you. Hi. Thanks for being here, thank you. How are you doing? There are more of you, I see you.
Congratulations. You're enjoying your time.
Thanks for being here.
I know. I know. I'm glad you had some lunches and stuff, y'all. Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad to see you. Thank you. Thanks for being here. That's my favorite point. How are you?
Our retired educators may not be in our classrooms on a daily basis now, but they do still a great job in supporting our work here in Forsyth County Schools. So, we appreciate your years of service and your continued support of our school system. Now, it's time for our Superior Spotlight performance, which tonight is presented to us by the Academy of Creative Education and Mr. Drew Hayes.
Thank you all so much for having me. I really appreciate it. Thank you for the honor of being able to just talk a little bit about our programs and what we're doing and recognize some of our folks tonight. For those of y'all who may not be aware, the Academy's creative education are sort of our alternative arm here in Forsyth County. And it's built of three different programs or schools, the three being Forsyth Academy, Gateway Academy, and then Forsyth Virtual Academy. And I wanted to highlight just briefly something about each of the three, each of the three programs. First and foremost, with Forsyth Academy, one of the biggest changes that we've had go on this year and that I'm extremely proud of, Erin Zetka came over from teaching and learning and she's done just a tremendous job, day one, walking in the door. The tone that's been set is personal and caring. We've been much more flexible with students in terms of when can you come versus we have a morning session and an afternoon session because we're trying to meet work needs, family transportation issues, all types of things. And we've set up with contracts of, okay, you say you need your schedule, this is what we'll do. We'll work out an individual agreement with you. Daily attendance is up well over ten percent every single day. And then also, Fridays have been an opportunity day. That was a time when kids could come in and get help from a content teacher specifically. A normal day for us, we'd only have about fourteen or so kids come and take advantage. We're averaging over forty each day at this point. And that's just a big initiative that Ms. Zetka put into place. And then another thing that we're striving for, we want a more blended environment. And so, Ms. Zetka and the math teachers in particular have focused on a hamzahon-relevant collaborative project regardless of grade level, regardless of thing in the field of mathematics. The first one, and you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, was, okay, we need to redesign this parking lot and we need to make sure we can get all of these cars in these various spaces. And the kids went out and had to break it down and show how they would do it and do those things within the class. And it's been a big success. They're doing their second one this upcoming month, but we wanted it in just, as opposed to just being on the computer, okay, we're out and we're working together to fulfill some of those things. Our second spotlight on Gateway, one of the things that y'all are going to have in front of you tonight, and obviously we spoke about last week, is the idea of the possible full-time drug counselor that could be coming along the way. Again, drug use has been a big issue countywide, but certainly for kids that have come to us for various reasons. We've had counseling and that's increased, but this would even take that to another level and I'll be speaking about that at the Drug Summit next week. One of the things that we've just incorporated, we brought in Dr. Patrick Delaney from West High School because he is mindfulness-trained in the background. He is doing mindfulness every day with students. Had a student today who was dealing with an issue, was struggling with me, didn't want to write anything down, and I looked at him and said, "Okay, Dr. Delaney's class, you do breathing, correct?" Like, he and I talked through it. He spent five minutes on his breathing exercise, wrote a statement for what it was that had happened, went and apologized to the person. And like, we talked about why that was possible and he just said, "I think more clearly once I've calmed myself down, I'm able to go through and do this." So, it's something that we are literally applying just in the course of our regular day. Dr. Delaney, we also purchased something called Find Your Grind, which is a program that helps the kids to figure out what their passions are, what their talents are, and then how could they apply that in the working world, either in a career area or if they wanted to start a business, what would be available or what things might they try. We're trying to engage them, catch them on fire, and make it something that's relevant to them. And then lastly, the FVA content specialists, I've asked them for minute one to come in and help with everything that we're doing at Gateway and play at least a small role in what is going on. Our personal fitness and health person who helped design our curriculum that we used over the summer, she's come in and worked with kids two and three days a week, trying to get them outside, get them active, talking about some of those things, and we're carving out time for that. We're finding the screen time is too much for the kids, especially the younger ones, and that this is helping considerably. Our person who's teaching the Intro to Digital Technology, she has come in, we have an entire class full of kids that she is serving in that class, and she said, "Drew, I've never worked with kids that are in trouble before." And I'm like, if you can engage this group, this is going to be a perfect training ground for what we're trying to do. And she's loved it and they've loved being able to take that class. And again, just applicable and relevant and stuff that they're interested in. And then lastly, on Fridays, our history person is coming in and doing an engaging NearPod lesson with the classes. We're pulling the kids out and it's very interactive. They have to create something over the course of that time and it's something that the kids are looking forward to and standards-based. So, we've been able to do that. And then, last but not least, FVA, it's exploded. We went from about two-hundred-and-seventy to about five-hundred-and-forty in the course of a year, number of seats with kids sitting in. As of right this moment, we have about nineteen-hundred seats that we're facilitating and so, a growth of three, almost four times, has been tremendous. Within that, we've got the various benefits. I think from my standpoint, what it's enabling kids to do, they've got an option they wouldn't have otherwise. We've got some full-time people who it's allowing them to change what, they can do what they want with their lives and still have education side-by-side with it. And then it's allowing the base schools to be able to go, okay, I can't take this class because all the things I've got to do, but now I can take this class because this is available. And so, it's just serving such a large variety of needs. Parent feedback from the summer's physical education was really, really positive. We literally did it from ground zero all the way through to the end. It was interactive, it was engaging. Kids used fitness monitors to track their progress and how they were doing. They were involved in discussion boards. We got predominantly very excited parents across the way and one literally said, "My daughter started exercising because of this class and she wants to continue." So...
My daughter did it. She enjoyed it. She actually enjoyed gym class for the first time and she really got out there and did it every day, so it was fun.
That's great.
And one of the things, the steps, they got that in and they recorded it. It was all tracked via the fitness devices and that type of thing. So, that was there. With history, our content specialist, he's a NearPod pioneer. He's somebody who we're utilizing some in the county and other roles as well to help train folks so that they're competent and developing within that. But a lot of what he's doing has been created via that, even in an online setting, and it's worked very, very well. His focus has been on student creation using Storyboard, NearPod, and then various websites so the kids are able to link in. It's much more creation-oriented than regurgitation-oriented and we think that's just going to serve the kids in what they're doing long-term. And they're engaged. He's a dynamic teacher and he's helping other teachers use the content that he's doing in a very effective manner so this will grow and expand out as he's doing it. He started with, one of the FA teachers has adopted it and has begun using this curriculum now as opposed to what he had had before. And then last, which we're very excited about, Carrie Beth Rakoski, who she received recognition here last month, I believe, because she was a Presidential Science Award winner. She has come over because she really wanted to help develop virtual reality experiences for kids and hands-on STEM-type stuff in a way that we could do. Gaming has been the way that we really want to be able to access this and so she's got a pathway where students are going to be designing games that have a virtual reality environment that they're able to create themselves and go through. We were approached by the College of Computing at Georgia Tech just this last week in a general conversation about could we potentially use their Computer Science Principles AP program that they're going to use, hoping to use throughout the state? And they wanted us, because of what we were doing, to help pioneer that and so we're having that general conversation as well. But basically, what Carrie Beth wants to do is create a pipeline where kids have relevant skills that they can then, if they want to, immediately go and apply to working in this industry because there's a very, very high demand. She sent me an article last week, which I didn't go into very much, but basically, right now, so many things that start with gaming are now what people are using to create training modules and all types of things. VR is moving very much in that direction, so the applications for this are humongous and we're wanting to be on the front end of that in Forsyth County. So, that's where we are. We also find that so many of the things right now, we don't even realize that we can use 360 cameras. The price is plummeting now in terms of what they were when they first came out. Kids are able to film and create all types of things with that and she's able to work with them in doing it. Also, just the VR applications are just tremendous. And she wants to start it even younger and younger. One of the things that she's working on right now in a collaboration with Cumming Elementary School and then the Alliance Academy, she has an elementary school class designing a game. They are drawing the pictures, they are writing the stories, they are doing all of the other portions, and they are trying the graphics. She's taking that, she's taking it over to the graphic design group at the Alliance Academy. They are scanning it all into Adobe and then she's going to have the VR content kids turn that into a game that functions, that the kids can play based on their creations. She wants to see that kids, from the elementary level all the way to the top high school level, are able to do that.
Just blows your mind away. We're going to have to take the class to understand it. So, for all those families.
I was visiting there the other day. You said nineteen-hundred Forsyth Virtual seats. Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that represents well over a thousand students, correct?
Correct. We're somewhere, the number changes a little bit from here to there. It's a little under thirteen-hundred students right now.
But it's not just, I'm sure it's mainly Forsyth County students, but is it totally...
It's a hundred percent. At this point, it's a hundred percent Forsyth County students.
Okay.
I mean, that doesn't count the students that are taking courses through Georgia Virtual. These are Forsyth Virtual students. We have thirteen-hundred students in our county taking at least one virtual course right now. Some are taking virtual courses full-time and that's why he said the nineteen-hundred seats.
So, how do we, this is awesome. How do we know what it's going to be, I mean, that much in one year?
That's a great question.
Exactly. I mean, how do we...
Well, that's why we staff Forsyth Virtual as we did for this year. We have a couple of content specialists that are helping us. We did a really good job with the personal health and fitness this summer.
It was, and to Drew's credit, they were awesome. There was a lot of questions as they were starting it up and parents were all very nervous and wanted to know all the details and they were so good about responding fast and getting back.
So, what Drew wanted to do, and rightfully so, is to make sure we did that course really well because word spreads when you do. And I think you're right, this is just going to very much take off. It is going to have implications on staffing in the future. But what it does, it creates lots of opportunities for our students. It does create challenges for our schools in terms of schedules. Students will show up at the end of the summer and have these courses that have been announced to us that they had taken. If it wasn't, if it's Forsyth Virtual, we know, but if it's Georgia Virtual, other, we might not. And so, it does create some challenges that way, but you know, the opportunities and the possibilities are very exciting for sure.
Well, it's a culture shift. It's much like working remote these days in the real world and, you know, you have to get a trust factor, a different kind of trust factor, that you're virtually there and that's a different kind of behavior than we're used to. So, it's going to take some adjustment.
It's a professional development challenge. I mean, teaching in the virtual world is different than teaching face-to-face. You just can't post lessons on its learning and call that virtual learning. It's not the same. But we have some really innovative, creative teachers who are great at this and we need them to help us with a professional development.
Well, and our human resources right now, we're doing the online credentialing. They're working on that process and all three of my folks are going to be a part of that meeting tomorrow and we've had a conversation about how do we design this in such a way that it benefits staff throughout the county so that the kids have that opportunity.
I don't know so much if it's Georgia Tech wanting to come up here and participate with us, but it's more of them coming up wanting to see how it's done. It's the stuff they do. It's scary.
It'll be fun. We're excited.
I tell you, to me, I'm sitting here listening, especially when you were talking about Forsyth Academy and all the changes there, what it was when it started out to be, which is a haven for those kids that were not comfortable in the regular school setting. And you have just taken it to another level where it's exciting, it's relevant, and I just, yes, that's going to explode too.
Two-hundred-and-fifty Forsyth Academy students right now.
Right.
And I think this is one of those keys that we look for when we're talking about a graduation rate.
That's right.
Talking to our accreditation folks. This is how we take it up that extra notch, which is the hard part.
It's a difference maker, no doubt about that.
So, we appreciate you, Drew.
Thank you all so much, really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Drew.
That was fabulous. Great. Take a break.
Yes.
After the consent agenda, right?
Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To move.
Second. All in favor?
We are going to have public participation next. If there's anybody who would like to leave before we start, this would be a good time. We'll wait just a minute. Okay. We welcome everybody that wants to participate in this process. I'm going to read a procedure that we usually follow when we have people come to speak before us. The board policy, BCBI, sets forth the rules for public participation and copies are available on the back table. Anyone requesting to speak to the board must sign a form indicating that they have read and will follow the requirements of the policy. Public participation is designed to allow citizens to speak to the board and the board members do not respond during this part of the agenda unless they have specific questions for the presenter. The board requests that multiple speakers from a subdivision appoints a single representative to address the board. We will allow five minutes per speaker. And we have several speakers, but each, we have four that would like to speak and each one will be given five minutes to speak. And the first one will be Tracy Ann Moore Grant. Would you please come up to the mic here, please?
I'd be happy to. With my understanding, I wouldn't be this speaker. And not knowing the procedure, all I had was questions. So, I'm not quite sure how productive this will be, but I'm a resident of Rosewood Lake Subdivision and it came to our attention, I think, far too late that, it's my understanding, the school board is under contract for middle school eleven to be on Hyde Road. And at this point, I know that there's several concerned people from our subdivision. Do you want to raise your hands? That are here and I think one of the main issues is the lack of transparency about the process and the lack of information that we've been given. And so, I think the lack of transparency and information causes unease in our neighborhood and our surrounding area because we really don't know what's going on and this process is so far down the road that we don't feel at all engaged in the process or that we have the correct information. So, we were hoping that this would be an opportunity to ask the questions that could perhaps put some of our concerns to rest. And having read the procedure about an hour before this meeting, when I was actually told I wasn't approved to speak, it's my understanding that we won't get our questions answered, so I'll just pose them into the record. So, our main concern, I think, for everybody in our area is the traffic. My understanding from the procedure is that the school board comes in and finds a desirable piece of property primarily based on the structure of the land and its access to sewer. And that this school board would purchase that land for a good price. Some of those landowners may be here today. And that any of the infrastructure, as far as the roads, the safety, is punted to the county who has no input in the process of the purchase of the property. And that's our understanding of how things go and if that isn't correct, we would like to be corrected about that. I think everyone's number-one concern is the safety that would pose an issue on Hyde Road. Hyde Road is a small country road, it's probably one of the few we have left in the county, has a lot of nature, has a lot of grades in the road, and it was designed to carry people to their homes. The main problem that we all see in our area is traffic, even on a road like Post, complete gridlock at certain times of the day, trying to get to and from anywhere in that area. My office is on Kelly Mill Road directly across from the chamber. I cannot go down Kelly Mill when west is letting out. You cannot go to the CVS when west is letting out because people are parking there, so we're assuming the same thing would happen to our neighborhood. That we have a lake in our neighborhood, which I think would be attractive for people to come over and park and tell their kids to come over into the neighborhood. It would cause an attractive nuisance and a liability issue for our neighborhood and more gridlock. It's a tiny road. It's our understanding the school would open with nine-hundred students. There would be no way to get emergency vehicles down the road or for us to be able to leave our neighborhood at all, twice a day. So, for people who have to get to four-hundred to go to work, and even for me, I just have to get down Kelly Mill Road, I cannot imagine the nightmare that that would cause. And it seems like our issue in the county is the buying of attractive property without the forethought of what is this going to do to traffic in this area? And I think it's a beautiful piece of land, it's just in the wrong spot. The road is only a mile or so long between Highway twenty and Drew Campground and there's no lights on either side. I think it would be difficult, and I'm not an expert, to put lights on the twenty-end or on the Drew Campground end because there are very sharp curves in the road right by each and I'm not sure that there would be appropriate site distance. That's probably why they haven't been done so far because even now, we're a cut-through road and there's a tremendous amount of traffic. So, most kids don't ride the bus anymore, so adding, starting out with nine-hundred cars on a small country road is going to cause a serious issue. And we think that the county commissioners should be involved at this point to see if that's a challenge that they want to take on before the property is purchased. And the traffic should be seriously considered. I am an attorney and I would be concerned about the liability that would come to the county from picking this piece of property without investigating the traffic concerns that could result.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Board, for hearing us. I also reside with us at Rosewood Lake, so I don't want to duplicate the utterance. I know we have other speakers. Same concerns. There's been, you know, our HOA now let us know that they found out about the potential purchase of the properties about four or five weeks ago. No public dissemination of information that we're aware of. The biggest problem with Hyde Road is it's a single lane in each direction. It's two miles long. There are no outlets. There's not a single road other than twenty or Kelly Mill that allows you access in or out. So, if the school's purchased and developed in the area that's been identified by the Board of Education, there is no traffic solution to allow any traffic in or out other than coming directly on Hyde Road. If the school looks at the traffic, we've all experienced Post Road victory, and I've been here ten years since we moved from California. It's added thirty to forty minutes to commute just to get from there to four-hundred, whether you're going thirteen or twelve. So, to take another middle school with all the growth we have in the county and put it on a road that's two miles long and has no alternative access creates a huge traffic nightmare. And I would just echo the concerns that my HOA partner has shared, but I think that with the challenge that you guys face of finding available land, absolutely understand that. The site that's been identified creates a huge disruption and potentially some unsafe conditions for our residents and anyone else that would attend that school.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you for letting me speak. I also, excuse me, I caught that thing that's going around, so I apologize. I also live in Rosewood Lake. I sent an email to the board and also gave some details. I also want to interrate the points that have already been made. There are three big things on Hyde Road that are, I really consider big danger issues that we've experienced for the three years we've lived there. If you, from where we understand the south end of the property is, if you're traveling north on Hyde Road, you're going to go up a hill that has about an eighty-foot elevation increase. When you, and at the top of that hill is where, I believe, the southern point of that property starts. So, if the entrance of the actual school is anywhere near there, when you crest the hill, you will not be able to see any cars that are either parked, slowed down, or waiting to turn going into school. And I'm very concerned that that's going to be a major danger because I know I've had issues where somebody has turned into their house coming the other direction and I was crossing over the hill, I almost hit them. We had a deer actually jump over our car when we were crossing over the hill one time. And then we've also had, my wife had somebody that almost hit her also going the other direction on that hill. And I've seen another act... and I've seen another accident coming the other way. So, it's a, if we can't, you know, I implore you, please choose a different piece of property because that road is extremely dangerous and it's a cut-through that everybody uses to get around Post Road. If, at least get with the county and please look at the impact that all the traffic's going to have. Because it's, I mean, it's one thing for us living there, but for any kids that are going to the school. I don't want a kid getting, you know, on a bus, getting hit, having somebody get hurt on that road because it's extremely dangerous. On the other end of the road, there's S-curves that, while you're supposed to slow down, nobody does, and I've had a close call there, and my wife has too. So, you know, I know we saw that there was, somebody put some strips out to test the number, the amount of traffic for one day, but I think, I'm hoping that a better study or a longer study is done because that road, it just can't handle the traffic it has right now. And it's dangerous and people speed, and there's nothing we can do to stop them. So, I just appreciate your time, and I implore you to please reconsider buying the land.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Jeff at Jed Lake, the Lakes?
Sure.
My name is Jeff Lake. I live at 505-5 Jekyll Road. I've lived there for the last twenty-one years. My wife and I, let me preface one thing. I have sent two letters to the board regarding my position to this piece of property being used for a school site, and my position is somewhat different, although I share the same concerns, but the people from Rosewood Lake share as far as safety and traffic and so forth. But, I own property adjoining the proposed school site, which includes a six-acre lake, which was impounded by an earthen dam fifty-plus years ago. In October two thousand and eleven, I received a letter from the Southside County Department of Engineering stating that the portion of our property which contains the lake has been identified as having a higher risk to flooding than previously determined and is being mapped into a high-risk zone known as special flood hazard area. The letter further states, and you'll have a copy of that letter, that the special flood hazard areas are identified as zones A and E, and the attached aerial photo indicates that our lake is in a zone A. The creeks feeding from our lake feed into Cobb Creek and eventually into Big Creek and the Chattahoochee River. Our six-acre lake is primarily fed from two smaller spring-fed lakes, one of which is on the twenty-acre proposed school site referred to as the Blue Property, and another on the north of the site, but not on any of the proposed property. Numerous other freshwater springs originate on the twenty-acre mostly wooded site for the proposed school referred to as the Molder Property, also which feed into the lake. And the lake contains at least six underground springs that we have identified during freezing weather because we, it doesn't freeze where those springs are. During extreme rainfall such as occurred in two thousand and nine, when we had approximately thirteen inches of rain over a seven-day period, the water level reached within inches of the top of the dam. I personally put sandbags on the top of the dam to keep, to be, ensure that it didn't breach the dam. The spillway, concrete spillway that we had was completely destroyed by the force of the water coming from the lake, which, of course, it has been replaced by now at my expense. The property below our lake is an organic family-run farm. This property was completely flooded in two thousand and nine during the same rain period and has flooded several other times in lesser rain periods. The construction of a school on the adjoining property, which all slopes toward our lake, will no doubt increase stormwater runoff significantly with the destruction of the trees and the underbrush on the twenty-acre Molder Property, and that is even with retained upon is being built on that property. I asked this board, if it were your property and your lake, would you want to have a school built that could possibly have a dam breach? And you become responsible, you become liable for that dam breach? I don't think you would. I have met with the school board's facility planner and have seen his responses and heard his responses that this property is the only suitable site large enough for a school in the area where a school is needed. He stated the site is required to be within the boundary of Pre-Campground Road and Highway twenty. I submit to you, this is basically a two-mile stretch of Forsyth County. Pretty limited area that apparently it is required to be in. My question is, why is it in, only has to be in this little two-mile-wide stretch of Forsyth County? When there are other significant parcels available north of Highway twenty and along Highway twenty? I have personally handed you a copy of an ad that I just pulled up today and had pulled up prior to today showing, I think it's a two-twenty-five acre tract of land that are for sale and an average cost for both the adjoining properties, and the average cost of that property would cost the school board forty-two thousand dollars an acre, according to the ad. Based on the rumored price that has been floated around as to what the school board is paying for the proposed property, I'm not sure the taxpayers of this county will be very happy to know that we're paying almost double just to put this school on Hyde Road. Just doesn't make any sense to me. I'm sure if you wanted to advertise that you're willing to pay ninety to a hundred thousand dollars an acre for school property, there's no telling how many people would break your arm to take your money. I'm sure if I owned that property, I would take it. I had also mentioned to the facility planner that I have personally looked on the Forsyth County property tax map, and I see parcels, even though they may not be available for sale today, that are available even within this little two-mile strip over on Howard Road. And the response I get to that is, well, that road is too curvy. Well, if that road's too curvy, then why did we build a school on Kelly Mill Road? Probably the most curvy road in the whole county, and that school is built right in the middle of a curve. And then I get the story, well, we can't build on Highway twenty because, you know, it's a major highway. So, why do we have schools already on major highways? Why do we have a school already on Highway twenty, which is, of course, Sony Elementary? Why do we have schools on Highway one forty-one? Why do we have schools on three sixty-nine? You know, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me that we can't put a school also on Highway twenty, which we know there's property available there. Not only should the cost of the land be a major concern, the topography of the land should also be a concern. The proposed parcels have approximately somewhere between an eighty and ninety-foot drop from Hyde Road to the property line that adjoins my property. I submit to you that that's going to be some expensive site preparation when you could find some flat property, especially property that may be pastureland that's already cleared. I just have a hard time understanding that we can't find a property that's a more suitable site to build a school on. It concerns me, just as I think I heard someone else say, it may have been this board, that the residents of Hyde Road have not really been informed a whole lot about this school being built there. As a matter of fact, if I hadn't received a letter from the Facilities Planning Department wanting to pour sewer across fifteen acres of property that adjoins where my residence is, then I wouldn't even know it, and these people back there probably wouldn't know it because I'm the one who informed them to begin with. I just believe the school system has a duty to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And I don't find this piece of property to be within good stewardship of the taxpayers' money. I'd like to ask you members if you're comfortable with approving the purchase of this property to construct a school on such an unsuitable site, which is not the only site available, which has potential damage to the environment with downstream flooding, destroying a family farming operation, destroying wetlands, and clean water sources for wildlife, and even possibly humans in a county that we are already having to contend for work sources because of government regulations. I just happen to think you would prefer a more suitable site to put this school on, and I would request that you spend a little more time seeking a suitable site. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the presentation of the financial report with Chris Brown.
Good evening. Give me a second here. Sorry about that. All right, you have before you the financials as of the end of the month of September two thousand and eighteen. On the first page, you'll see our statement of cash receipts and disbursement for the month of September. Down at the very bottom, you'll notice at the end of the month, we had close to forty-five million dollars in the general fund, or total cash, I'm sorry. It's about twenty million dollars more than last year at this point in time, and we'll see why in just a second. So, we're in good shape cash-wise. On the next slide, you'll see our revenue detail, year-to-date budget as of September thirtieth. Look at the abhorrent taxes, the very first line, you'll see year-to-date actual, almost twenty-nine point five million. Last year, had some early payers this year, which is always good. Last year, we were around nine million dollars, so that would be the extra twenty million dollars in cash. So, again, that's put us in a good position. Normally, this time of year is when our cash gets a little bit tighter just because of our abhorrent taxes representing almost fifty percent of our budget, so we're very pleased to receive that money earlier this year. So, that's taking a little bit of that pressure off. Total revenues, down at the very bottom, you'll see as a percentage nineteen point nine six. Around this, last year, we were around sixteen percent. Again, that's the abhorrent taxes. Very similar to last year except for the abhorrent taxes. On our year-to-date budget report focusing on expenditures, down at the very bottom, you'll see percentage-wise twenty-five point seven seven percent. Three months into the year, we should be around twenty-five. Looking back at last year, we were at twenty-five point six three, so very comparable. Again, some of that is some stuff that we may purchase early in the year, so no alarming data there as well. In very good shape. Next, you'll see our debt services cash analysis. At the very bottom, you'll see our cash balance, thirty-six point three million roughly. Keeping in mind, our next debt service payments are due February first, roughly around forty-six and a half million. Keeping in mind, we have our SPOS five receipts. We still have October through January to collect as well as our debt service millage rate we'll receive. You can see we already received about four million. Property tax, we'll continue to receive more. The budget there is around twenty-six, twenty-seven million. So, we'll be in great shape for that February first payment, is where I'm going with that. Almost, you know, at thirty-six million, we need to be at forty-six, so just really based on the SPOS collections, we'll be at forty-six, so that doesn't even count the debt service millage. So, then that debt service millage will carry over to the next payment, which is our August payment. So, again, just keeping a little bit of a cushion there, but again, trying to manage that pretty efficiently. Next, maybe I'll have to do something to kind of, do some of the slide. It's getting smaller and smaller. So, I noticed that earlier when I came in here to preview this, I was like, I'm not sure I can read that. So, we'll work on that. Just our total investments. Most of this is in capital project funds of two hundred and eighteen point five million. Again, most of that's our two thousand and eighteen bond. We're continuing, starting to see an increase in spending that money. Of course, a lot of that is tied up in our future building projects, but technology, safety, transportation, we're starting to see some dispersments there, so that money will start trickling down over time.
Sony was real glad to have their new screens in today.
Oh, yeah.
As they were talking about.
Mike's done a great job spearheading that. Again, but we did earn almost two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in interest on the two thousand and eighteen bond, so as we continue to have that larger balance, and there we are earning around two percent on that money. So, that money will eventually go back into future projects as well, so that's something to keep in mind as well. General fund, we didn't have much invested. Again, as we receive our abhorrent taxes, we will continue to, once we get to November, once we've got our full collection, we'll start to invest that money.
Can you say the payments? I know they always come out in February, and you said, is the other one in August?
Yes, ma'am.
There's that one in June. They used to do one.
We are down to just February and August now.
Okay, just the two.
Yeah, just that makes it much simpler on us just to have those two payment cycles, but that's our payment cycle. SPOS collections, a little bit less than the last month. I still see an alarming trend there. We're still two point three million dollars ahead of, if you look at the same fourteen months. We're fourteen months in the SPOS five, so the total collections is up forty-five point three million. If you compare that to the same fourteen-month period, we're still two point three million ahead. The percentage changed one point three percent, so not a drastic change there at all. It's still, compared to last year, almost ten percent over at that same time.
Right.
So, monthly average still three point two million, very good there. Keep it in mind, I think we capped SPOS five at around a hundred and ninety, I think it was a hundred and ninety-five million as the total cap on SPOS five. At some point in time, I think we will reach that toward the end of probably, looking at maybe March, April, maybe just a couple of months early is what we anticipate there. Cash receipts and disbursements by schools, again, this trend is very similar to last year. Elementary schools total four point three million, middle schools a little over two million, high schools close to four million, ten point three million in our school accounts. Last year, we were around nine million. Of course, we've added Alliance and Denmark, so that accounts for three or four hundred thousand of the difference, but this tends to fluctuate. But again, we're very comparable where we were at last year.
Good. Good deal.
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
We'll move on to action items, drug prevention and counseling agreement. Dr. Bearden?
Yeah, so last week, as you know, we talked about the agreement between the county commissioner's sheriff's office and the Board of Education for our drug prevention and counselor. We now have the final agreement with the sheriff's office, so I know we voted on it last week, but now that we've tied everything up with that department, I would ask for you to vote for, this will be final approval, planning on the counselor starting around the first of November, pending approval tonight. So, with that, I would recommend approval of this intergovernmental agreement between county commissioners, sheriff's office, and Board of Education.
Send motion to approve?
To move.
Second.
Tom, a second from Kristen. Any comments?
Just one question. This also includes United Way, so it's part of that.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
But they're just a little part of the, some funding comes from United Way.
Okay, great.
Right with that.
Perfect.
Good. All right. All in favor?
Thank you.
Adamus, thank you. That's a great, great move to work with our kids with that. Next is the middle school number eleven, Georgia DOE, site selection submitted, it's a middle by Tim Amerson. Tim, before you start, I have a request. If you would please go through the... Tim, before you start, I have a request, if you would please go through the procedure that you emailed out earlier to so many people.
Regarding our notification as we develop property.
How it, how it does that. Yes, please.
Right now, like I said, we're under the due diligence. The package you have here is from our environmental and site studies that we'll be preparing and sending to the state of Georgia Department of Facilities. And we expect to get their review and approval back within about 30 days, at which time we'll ask God to go ahead and ratify the contract so we can go ahead and proceed with closing. We typically have that planned for about the 1st of December. Now, we've had to extend several of those contracts to bring everything together. Once we get the property acquired, we're already working on site designs. We've had, developed a preliminary plan that we're working with for the site. And we'll have that, that'll be produced in a sketch plat. The sketch plat is kind of like a zoning procedure from the county. We'll put this together, sketch plat, we'll invite all the surrounding neighborhoods and anybody who's interested to a meeting. We plan to host that at the West Forsyth High School.
Okay.
And that'd be pretty much a public forum for everyone to attend, see the site plan, talk about concerns, how we're addressing those concerns, such as traffic.
And the, and the dam.
Yeah, and the dam. And then from there, once we get those comments from the public participation meeting, we'll make a formal request to the Board of Commissioners, and it'll be a public hearing at the county administration in front of the Board of Commissioners, that will present what our plan is for the property. And then other folks will have an opportunity to speak their opinions of the property and their concerns.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that, since that was a lot of questions that were asked earlier. All right, and this is the first submitted to the Georgia DOE that you've got.
This is the site selection request that we're submitting to the Georgia Department of Education Facility Services Unit, and the primary opportunity to review the size of the property and the adequacy, safetiness of the property. We look at the 13 mitigating risk hazards around the property and how we'll address those.
Okay.
One of the comments made was that of the small lake on the property, and that we've already reached out and have a proposal from an engineering firm specializing in dams to work up a dam breach, so we'll actually breach that dam to restore that stream channel back to normal waters.
Okay, okay.
And currently, we still have the geotechnical work on the site and the traffic study work that's being done on the site. So we expect to have those reports within about three to four weeks.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so tonight, we're just asking for approval from the board to move this order to the Geo-
This is a good.
Department of Education site selection. Okay, with that, I recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Tom, a second by Nancy. Any comments?
It's part of the process.
Yep, all in favor? Thank you, Tim. Next on the agenda is the HVAC ERU, an administrative HVAC replacement phase one. Okay.
If you'll say it three times, it'll get on you.
All right.
I'm here tonight to talk about the Energy Recovery Unit. That's what ERU stands for.
Why don't we hold on a second, please?
I'm here tonight to talk about the Energy Recovery Unit replacements for Little Mill Middle School, Sony Elementary School, Vickery Creek Middle School, Chesty Elementary, Coming Elementary, and Matt Elementary Schools. This was all part of ERU, the Phase One part, that was part of the 2018 bond. I think you have attached a bid sheet that shows that we had four different vendors that bid. We felt very good about the, all of those vendors. And what we're asking for is to award Little Mill, Sony, and Vickery to Conditioned Air, and to award Chesty, Coming, and Matt to Capital City Mechanical. Both of these are longtime vendors that we've worked with and we feel really good about. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them for you.
All right, recommendation?
Recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation for the HVAC?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Nancy, second by Tom. Any questions, comments? All right, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Points of information, and I have to see, I've been on the board 16 years, and I've never seen a 99% attendance rating. That's what.
Oh, for the, for the Monticello?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah.
99%, incredible.
I don't have any comments, except for that, I would. Good stuff. Just to follow up, you know, Drew was talking about Forsyth Academy Gateway, and as you know, I'm touring all the schools this semester again. And the culture and climate at both those facilities are really, really good. And talking to some of the staff at Forsyth Academy yesterday, we have the same team of teachers now for the third consecutive year at that school. So what's really nice to see is the folks who have transitioned into those alternative sites have decided to stay. They like working with that population of students. We're having the same experience at Gateway, and that's really helping us with the culture and climate piece. I'm really proud of that fact. And also this morning, as you know, we had our principal for a day breakfast in our partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. And those events will take place between now and the next four or five weeks, and we'll have our luncheon in November. So thank you for your support of that.
Good. All right, at this time, we need a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
So moved.
Motion for Tom.
Second.
Second by Kristen. All in favor? Yes, thank you.